Good evening, everybody. This is February 7th, 2019. This is the meeting of the Northampton City Council. And these proceedings are being audio/video recorded. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. I'll be presiding tonight. We start every meeting with public comment. This is a chance for the public to speak on any issue. We ask you keep your comments to three minutes. And remember that it's your time to give your opinion to us. We don't have a back and forth. But is there anyone who would like to give public comment? I guess.
Nobody's.
Okay. So I gave that whole preamble for nothing. Are you sure? Last call. Any subject? Random thoughts? So hearing none, we will convene, and I'll ask for a role of the city council.
Councilor Bidwell.
Here.
Councilor Carty.
Present.
Councilor Dwight.
Here.
Councilor Klein.
Here.
Councilor Labard.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Councilor Shearer.
Here.
All right. So we're here, as you heard. Let me announce a public hearing first. This is an announcement. I'm going to read it from this. It's an announcement of a public hearing. And according to the Charter of the State of Northampton in Article 7, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, this is the Capital Improvement Program hearing. So we will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 21st, at 7:05 here in the city council chambers at 212 Main Street, Northampton. The city council will consider the capital improvement program for fiscal year FY '20 through FY '24. And here all persons who wish to be heard, they're on. And the council meeting starts at 7:00. We usually schedule the meetings for 7:05 after public comment. Maybe we can muster some up for that day. So let me note also that this capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020 through 2024 will be available for inspection by the public if you want to go look at it. And let me give you some of the places where you can inspect the capital program. First, on the website, northhamptonmass.gov. Next, at Forbes Library. The next is at Lilly Library. Next, in the mayor's office. And also the city council office. And I won't read you all of the times that those buildings are open, although we've published those times in the newspaper. But come by during the operating hours of those places, and you can review the capital budget. And then again, on February 21st, the capital program, rather, on February 21st, two weeks from tonight, we will have a hearing, and we may have a vote on it as well. So let's see. No updates from me. Other updates from Councilor Dwight?
As requested by the council president, I am the council appointee member to the Charter Review Committee. I just came scrambling over here from there. We had our first meeting today, electing our officers. Stan Moulton will serve as chair. Sam Hopper will serve as vice chair. And the city solicitor presented the group with a sort of a overall description of the historic process, and then the process going forward for reviewing and understanding the charter as it stands, and the problems that may be presented, and possible remedies, and also making ourselves available to the public. When I left, we were scheduling, and I believe it will be, but I haven't had solid confirmation of that, but it'll be the first and third Tuesday of every month. And we have until the end of the year to come up with recommendations that we will forward to the mayor and to this chamber. And I also would like to say that I was really, really impressed with the committee membership. There is a diversity of perspective and a depth of knowledge. It's pretty comprehensive. And I expect really good things from this. So the public is available to attend these meetings, and also to present testimony, or certainly participate in public comment at the beginning of each meeting if they have some thoughts relative to this. And it is my intent, as by request by the council president, I think it's a good idea, for me to give updates as they become available to me. And I will do that going forward. And then I'd also like to add that there will be a joint hearing of legislative matters on the planning board this coming Monday. This is relative to the solar array, proposed solar array language, which, as I understand, the document we referred has changed significantly in consultation with the city solicitors. So there will be a robust discussion there if the public's interested in attending that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's an important committee, so appreciate you keeping us and the public advised about the charter. If you commit. Any other? Councilor Shearer?
On Friday, February 15th, so a week from tomorrow, there's a town hall with state Rep. Lindsay Sabadosa and State Senator Joe Comerford. That's going to be at Northampton High School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They're collecting questions ahead of time, but I think there also will be opportunity there if you come up with a question. But if you do know of a question, I think you can contact either one of their staff and give them that question.
Thank you very much. Other updates, announcements? No? Okay. Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications?
No.
Okay. So let's see. We have a consent agenda. I'll read the items. If you want to remove them for a separate vote, please say so. Otherwise, there is no discussion. It contains the minutes, approval of the minutes of January 17th, 2019. And it also contains two appointments, which have already received positive recommendations from the Committee on City Services. And those are the appointment to the Arts Council of Freeman Stein of 27 Fairfield Avenue, term February 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021, to the Central Business Architecture Committee, Pauline Fogel of 16 Fourth Avenue, February 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2019. So vote on those would be equivalent to appointing those people. And then there are some, which will be, when you vote on the consent agenda, it will be equivalent to referring them to the Committee on City Services for recommendation. And there are three of those. To the Housing Partnership, Dan Krasner of 16 Winslow Avenue in Florence, March 2019 through June 2022. To the Human Rights Commission, Rachel Maury, 392 Chesterfield Road in Leeds, March 2019 through June 2019. Also, to the Human Rights Commission, Megan Peck, or, yeah, I'll say that and probably mispronounce the name. But she lives at 9 Laurel Street in Northampton, and her term would be March 2019 through June 2022. So now we got a motion, and a second.
One more for the housing authority.
Oh, is that right?
You know what? It was a late add. I apologize.
Oh, thank you. Very good. So last but not least, this will also be for referral to the Committee on City Services, to the Housing Authority, Elizabeth Silver of 67 Willow Street in Florence, from February 2019 to March 2021. Now we have a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. There is no discussion, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose any abstentions. That was very nice. And we'll immediately adjourn, so Chairman David Murphy can lead the finance committee.
Councilor, Laura, would you call our role, please?
Sure. Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor Carty.
Present.
Councilor Labard.
Present.
And Councilor Shearer.
Here.
So our first item is approval of our minutes from January 17th. Do we have a motion on that?
Second.
Any changes or alterations? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now on to some financial orders. The first is 18-233, "In Order to Acquire Land on Chestnut Mountain Road in Hatfield for Water Supply Protection." Order that whereas the city of Northampton owns a surface-drinking water supply in the towns of Hatfield, Whately, and Williamsburg, which is surrounded by watershed land owned by both the city and private property owners, and whereas it is in the interest of the city to acquire privately-held parcels within this watershed as they become available for sale to protect its drinking water supply, and whereas certain parcels of land within the watershed are available for acquisition, and it is in the interest of the city to acquire the parcels for watershed protection, now therefore be it ordered that the city council authorizes the acquisition by gift purchase eminent domain or otherwise, the fee interest in one parcel of land containing 9.125 acres, more or less located on Chestnut Mountain Road in Hatfield, and shown on as parcel three in a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Hatfield, Massachusetts, surveyed for the city of Northampton dated January 15th, 2019, by Heritage Surveys, Inc. This acquisition is for the purpose of sanitary protection of the Mountain Street Reservoir, part of the city of Northampton's water supply. The parcels shall be held in the custody and control of the Department of Public Works. No further appropriation is necessary for the acquisition of the easement authorized hereunder inasmuch as sufficient funds for the acquisition have been appropriated in the Water Enterprise Fund." Do we have a motion in finance?
There's a motion.
Second?
Second.
And the mayor can talk to us about this. We have maps.
Yes, there's a map that shows you where it sits in relation to the rest of our watershed land the city owns, which is all in green. You can see that red area to the right of the Mountain Street Reservoir, which is one of our major drinking water reservoirs. It's a 9.125-acre parcel of land. The parcel is owned by Gerard and Jeanette Marshand of West Hampton. About 1.5 acres of that parcel is in the Zone A, which is the most sensitive zone of the watershed. And the rest is largely a forested parcel with wetlands covering the western portion of the property. So it's not a developable land, but it's something that you can see. We've been slowly piecing together ownership of that protective watershed land around the reservoir. There's no price in the actual order because there's no appropriation, but I will say that the property was appraised at $22,000 by an outside appraiser, and that is the purchase price that the city will be paying for the land as part of the capital improvement program appropriated money for watershed land acquisition. So that's why there's already money set aside for these opportunities.
Councilor Labard?
Thank you. How many parcels at 22,000? There's just one.
It's just that red parcel, which is 9.12 acres.
Who are we buying that from?
That would be Gerard and Jeanette Marshand of West Hampton.
Councilor Bidwell?
Is this a fee interest in the property or an easement?
We are purchasing the property. It will become part of our holdings, which all that green land that you see now currently surrounding the watershed is owned by the city.
The language in the last sentence refers to acquisition and easement.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why that was in there, because the actual authorization is for the acquisition by gift purchase eminent domain or otherwise. So I think that's probably just a glitch from a previous, but it's not really an operative part of the order, because it's basically saying we're not appropriating any money. So, I mean, if you would like to, if someone wanted, if we wanted to change that, you know, acquisition of the property, change easement to property, that would correct it.
Or we could clean it up for second reading of it.
What's that?
We could clean it up for the second reading of it so that it's correct.
That's whatever you prefer. As I said, I don't think it has any real operative value, because it's really just declaring that we're not paying. We don't have to, this isn't an appropriation order. It's an acquisition order.
Councilor Klein, you have a question?
Sorry, I have a pop drop in my mouth, and I don't want to spit it out. What's the condition of the property? Is it, you said something about it being?
It's mostly wooded, forested land, which is what most of the watershed is, and there's also significant wetlands on the property as well.
I'm curious about two things. Is forest management going to be needed for this property? And do you know about the, if there are many invasives, if we're going to have to do clearing of invasives in the property?
So I don't know the answer to the latter question. We do have forest management plans for all of the watershed protection lands. We have a professional forester, and all those plans are available on the website. And we do active management. I can't tell you specifically about the invasive question. I can't tell you that. But it would definitely be part of, generally, we leave the land forested for the most part, unless there are issues with trees that are diseased or dying, and may be in danger of falling into the reservoir itself. So we do do some forest management as part of our plan, but I can't tell you specifically about that.
Councilor Labard, you have another?
Mayor, we are saying 9.1 and 1/2 acres at 22,000.
Dollars.
Did I just hear you say that it is wetlands, it's under conservation, and it's not buildable?
I said that 1.5 acres of it is located in a certain Zone A, and that it's a forested parcel, and it does have some wetlands on the property. I didn't say it was all wetlands. I said it's a forested.
But is any of it buildable?
I do not believe so, but I'm not.
I'm just curious, because I know, like, any kind of construction or building, like in Ward 6 or throughout the city, if it involves conservation, at a selling price would be either $900 to $1,000 per acre?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the issue here, did you have a?
No, I was just, when this question's done, I was going to recognize. Councilor Dwight?
I can certainly try to get you then more clear information about it. I do not believe it is buildable. And certainly, we would not want there to be.
No, I know.
That's why we're acquiring it.
That's why I'm saying at 22,000, when working with mine, it's been like per acre at $1,000.
An acre.
An acre.
Yeah. So I don't, I'll try to get you the more information. I know we did hire an outside third-party appraiser, so I'm assuming they took into account all of those issues. There may also be timber value on the property as well, which often gets incorporated into the price of a parcel like this. So I can get you that between now and second reading.
Councilor Dwight?
This is one of those curiosities. I know that a number of constituents I've spoken with, they were saying, we are basically acquiring land in another community. And in fact, actually, whatever building rights or tax potential that could be seen from it wouldn't be realized by us. It'd be by the, if we're not discouraging a potential developable site that we would otherwise benefit from if we allowed it to be developed.
That is correct.
It wouldn't be ours to allow that.
And obviously, we wouldn't want development in the Zone A watershed area. And, you know, we did, you know, we also acquired the reservoir, however many hundreds of years ago. So, yeah.
Insofar as that, I mean, and I, just if you could expand on it a little bit, because I know this is a curious thing, where one community basically has a portion of another community that is under our aegis and our autonomy, as I understand, right? These are the, well, certainly, we own the land, and we own the watershed, so. Right. And all our, for instance, our police would respond to a situation on that property. It would be our enforcement officers.
You know, I don't know that that would, it would be precluding other police to respond, but it's not, yeah. But, I mean, we also have a ranger that patrols it, that patrols our watershed land, and we have other security measures to, again, because we're trying to protect our drinking water supply.
Right. And our drinking water supply is located in another.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Just like, you know, Boston's drinking water supply.
It's located in a good portion of our state.
Located in central Mass.
But it's, yes, so, because people have asked me.
Yeah.
They would say, well, how is this part of Northampton?
Yeah. It's somewhat common, particularly, you know, West Springfield and Springfield and Holyoke have reservoirs that are up in the mountains somewhere.
Has been a source of some contention historically, not recently, but certainly historically. Thanks, that was just.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that it doesn't have legitimate road frontage. I can't see the map anymore, but I think it, I think it's what's known as the Henhog Trail, which is like a logging road that goes up through there. So I don't think it's at all developable. It doesn't have any road frontage.
There is Chestnut Mountain Road that runs by it. But again, I don't know what, I don't know what their regulations are in Hatfield for what you would need for.
Yeah, that, even Stage Road goes up that way, too, and the end of it isn't considered a townway, so.
Right.
This continues.
Councilor Kenny?
Yeah, just a quick question. So all of the green area in the map is presently owned by the city of Northampton?
That is correct. That's Northampton watershed land, yes. And so you can see the white gaps.
Right. We're looking to purchase the red gap, and then ultimately, I'm just, I assume that we're ultimately looking to acquire those other white, as much around to the contiguous areas.
Typically, there's, typically, our watershed managers and environmental scientists, you know, we typically have sort of feelers out to owners that we know, and they understand that we, you know, want to acquire this property.
And that's kind of what happened in this case here.
That is exactly, yeah.
And then, so we should be prepared that if we're looking in the future, that there are some other areas that in the future would be.
And that's why, you know, it's somewhat analogous to what Mr. Fiden does with conservation land, when there's sort of the, looking at the puzzle pieces, and there's a empty, you know, spot, that we try to fill in those puzzle pieces in conservation areas. So, and that's similarly why we appropriate a certain amount of money in reserve when these opportunities arise.
Any other questions on this one? Then, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, the next is 18-234, "In Order to Accept Mass General Law 64G 3D-A to Impose Community Impact Fees on Short-Term Rentals." Order that whereas by virtue of Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, the legislature amended Chapter 64G of the Massachusetts General Laws by adding subsection 3D, which allows communities that have adopted a local room occupancy excise to adopt a community impact fee not to exceed 3% of the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a professionally-managed short-term rental unit that is located within the city. And whereas the city adopted a local room occupancy excise by city council vote on April 21st, 1988, was it 1988? Is that a typo? Seems like we did it more recently than that. And whereas it's in the best interests of the city to impose community impact fees upon the transfer of short-term rental units in professionally-managed units located in the city, and to dedicate the fees to affordable housing projects within the city. And whereas the authorization contained in subsection 3D is a local option requiring city council to accept the provision by majority, now therefore that the city of Northampton accepts the provisions of Section 3D of Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, and hereby imposes a 3% community impact fee on the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a professionally-managed short-term rental unit that is located within the city. All community impact fees received pursuant to this order shall be paid to the city monthly by the operator. All community impact fees received pursuant to this order shall be dedicated to affordable housing projects within the city. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion. Second.
All right. Questions for the mayor?
Well, I can just explain by way of background that these next two ordinances or orders are sort of complementary, and they're part of the new short-term rental law. And they were specifically aimed at addressing some of the negative impacts of the room-sharing economy, as it were, the short-term rental Airbnb economy, and which principally are taking rental units out of the housing stock in communities, particularly mostly in big cities. And so this particular order refers to, and I want to be clear, if you read the definition in the state law of a professionally-managed unit, it specifically exempts single-family, two-family, or three-family dwellings. And it's one of two or more short-term rental units that are located in the same city or town, operated by the same operator. And so what we're really talking about are managed, like apartment buildings, in a case where, you know, and this typically is happening in bigger cities like Boston, where there are apartment buildings that are professionally managed, they're not single-family, they're apartments. And instead of renting apartments, they're basically using them as short-term rentals. And so there's been a lot of study and a lot of evidence showing that it has had an impact on increasing rents in those areas, and then creating a shortage of rentals, and then obviously driving up the cost of rents and creating an affordability problem. So what the public policy issue here is that if you want to do that, there will be an additional community impact fee. Cities and towns are allowed to, are asked to dedicate at least 35% of this fee to affordable housing. I'm proposing that 100% of it be devoted to affordable housing. I don't have a good sense of how many of these units there are out there. Again, I think it's more of a big-city phenomenon, but I wanted to bring it forward for adoption so that we would have it as sort of a part of our toolbox in terms of affordable housing and making sure that we're not, through this new sharing economy, are not working at cross purposes at our goal of affording, ensuring that we have enough affordable housing stock and rental stock in the city.
Councilor Dwight?
What's the definition of a short term?
So, a short-term rental is an owner-occupied, tenant-occupied, or non-owner-occupied property, including but not limited to an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or a furnished accommodation that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed-and-breakfast, where at least one room or unit is rented to an occupant or suboccupant, and all accommodations are reserved in advance, providing, however, that a private owner-occupied property shall be considered a single unit and leased or rented as such. So it basically exempts, if you're a motel, or a bed-and-breakfast, or a hotel, you are already registered, and you already are licensed and fall under existing. The key with this is this was always a loophole. There was never, this didn't fit into any category.
But so the law does not define what constitutes a short term? Like, a year could be a short term?
No, actually, the only definitions that the law gives, that if you rent, if you do a short-term rental for 14 days or less, you're exempt from the tax.
Oh, so they only define the low end of it.
They did. They did. There were earlier versions that tried to extend that to much more, like half a year, but in terms of where the tax regulations fall, it's 14 days or less. If you exceed 14 days, then you would be subject to the taxes, at least the local option tax. So that's the only thing in terms of short-term rental.
Okay. Councilor Labard, do you have a?
Yes. I know, Mayor, when I had met with you the other day in regards to another issue, and then I had talked with Dee Clapp, who does have the bread and breakfast, who did get the emails that I sent you, and she did do, and I think you possibly read that, of the market on all this, and she has the market size here for February 2019, 260 home/apartment rentals, 142-bedroom rentals, 22 other rentals, and six farmhouse rentals. And there's great concerns between her and Craig, who also has a bed-and-breakfast. Apparently, he had something to do working with Boston and the language in that. And I printed out last night the regulations and the short-term rentals, and you can't find anything in here, which they have great concerns of going through the legality of the permit, having the Board of Health coming to them once a year to check, you know, their wells and so forth with the water, in order to keep those permits going. And they have great concerns of that language of professional.
But I would say that the definition of that specifically exempts bed-and-breakfast.
Okay, but there's other.
Craig's bed-and-breakfast.
That they have also, Mayor. And I really feel that a lot of people do not know about this, and they did not either until I talked with Dee, because I don't know anything about it. And she was very knowledgeable about the language and so forth, that I feel uncomfortable just voting on something without being able to reach out to the community who are involved in this, in the A and B. And I would really like to see this to go to maybe Community Resource, have one hearing, and hearing what people feel about this, and then let them hear exactly what this is all about and what you're presenting. And also, I think they are asking, too, to look at the possibility of not just affordable housing, which I support 100%, but also look at other towns and cities in regards to, like, the arts in our city, and go half and half with the money or whatever. That's why I think I need to give them, as a city councilor, who are owners, who do pay for permits and tax, and feel that. who are owners, who do pay for permits and tax, and feel that other people are doing it illegally. And that's on that email that I sent you. So, I think they should have the rights, anybody who is involved with this, to participate in a public hearing.
And I have no objection to that. I would say, I mean, I've talked to Craig, who's been an outspoken advocate for wanting this legislation.
He told me that.
Mostly because it was a loophole that exempted short-term rentals from the same kinds of any regulation that he as a bed-and-breakfast owner has to be involved in. But again, I, and again, I'm happy to, I have no problem if you want to have a hearing. This doesn't actually go into effect until July first, so it wouldn't have any impact between now and July first. I, you know, fairly clear that bed-and-breakfasts are exempt, so that's not what this, this would not apply to them in any way.
Right. I think what's bothering him, if you've read Craig's, is the language of professional and other things that are involved here.
Yeah. Well, I think I'd be happy to clear up any confusion he has, because it's pretty well spelled out in the legislation. So, if a hearing would help that, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. And if we have a hearing, it's funny, because before the council started, we talked about the bed-and-breakfast being exempt. And I haven't looked at this very long, but I printed out relevant parts of the law, and I just looked at it again. And so, one point of confusion for me, maybe you can tell me where I'm wrong, but the provision we're accepting says, the city council, the city or town accepts this, they can impose upon an operator a community impact fee. And then if you look at the definition of operator, under the same chapter, chapter sixty-four G, it does say operator, a person operating a bed-and-breakfast establishment, hotel, et cetera. So, notwithstanding that, is there another part that pulls out bed-and-breakfast again? Because it seems like it is in there.
So, bed-and-breakfast is referenced in this law because it was the law that used to cover bed-and-breakfast and hotel and short, and other, everything except short-term rentals. So, I think it's, they're sort of intertwined. So, I think that that's a general definition that includes operator. I'm not sure.
Something must modify that.
I think it's really trying to clarify that language, but it's certainly not referring to the operator of a bed-and-breakfast.
Uh huh.
It's an operator of a short-term rental, well, a professionally managed unit that is operating a short-term rental. And when you look at the, you know, well, this is, these are the reasons why we'll have.
Yeah, you can sort that out and.
We can definitely sort that out at a hearing and make sure people understand.
You know, I don't blame people for, you know, looking at a law and then being a little confused by it. So, and if there's no rush for July first, then.
There's no rush.
Just to be clear, this is a local option taxing fee. It's not regulations and regulating these systems, as we're trying to, as we're all trying to come to terms with this new type of economy. So, it's not, it is simply giving us an opportunity to at least extract some money that would help subsidize or offset the impacts to the community. It's, it wouldn't speak to the regulations that already regulated hotels, bed-and-breakfasts, and other services provide. They have to, they already pay hotel tax that we've already agreed with, but they also have to accommodate all the rules and permitting that you described and that the people who own bed-and-breakfasts are concerned with. They already have to abide by that. But, none of that's built in this language. That's a different form of legislation altogether. This just provides us with the opportunity to at least be compensated to offset the impacts that we have in the community. So, they're not mutually exclusive. That, I think, is the point. At least, that's my takeaway from this, that the state may give us enabling legislation at some point that allow us to regulate them in some way, but...
Actually have, and we're looking at, we're looking at potential, what that might look like. But, that's coming further down the line.
Yeah, I think it's important to stay focused on the fact that this is literally just taking advantage of a law that is now in place and allow, and agreeing to accept it that would allow us to start collecting. So.
Counselor Bidwell?
I think, I totally am supportive of this concept for a long time. I've been frustrated. We haven't had the authority from the legislature either to tax or to regulate this portion of the economy that's vibrant and growing. But, I do think it makes sense to send it to committee where we work through some of these details. And I too was curious if the plan was at some point to introduce a companion piece for addressing the public safety and health regulations, and whether the intent would be to have those in place by July one also. So, that's one of the things, as well as for hotel taxes, I know it's not considered, it's not the same thing, but an operator remits their, what eventually is their city tax to the state, and it comes back. But, this would go directly to the city, as I understand it.
Yeah.
And which raises questions about what is the collection mechanism?
It's a little.
So, there's a lot of details. I think it would be worth hashing through.
Yeah. It's a little unclear that that's actually the case. I think it may be collected at the point of sale, but I'm gonna need to research that a little bit more. But, again, if it were a fee or we, you know, the tax, the collector's office would collect it, just like all the other fees that are collected. We are, we do have an internal working group that consists of the building commissioner and the health department and the planning department that are looking at all the various aspects of this. And the problem is that this just, literally just passed at, you know, in the waning hours of the last legislative session, an informal session. Everyone thought it was sort of left for dead, and then suddenly it was revived and passed. So, many of us around the state are now scrambling to try to interpret it and figure it out. So, Boston had written a pretty comprehensive set of regulations, but, and then Airbnb filed suit. And so, now, so the law hopefully is going to give them the support they need. But, so we'll be, we're planning to look at that and bring forward those proposed regulations at a later date. We just can't do them that, this quickly, but we're trying to be thoughtful about it.
Counselor Klein?
The DOR has a good.
FAQ.
FAQ, and it covers pretty much everything, all the questions that are being asked here, and I think all of the things that the bed-and-breakfast owners who have been in touch with, a number of us counselors are asking about, and it's laid out in a very clear manner. One of the things it does say that just came up here is that the cities and towns municipalities are not actually collecting the excise tax. The operator or the proprietor is paying DOR directly, and it's redistributed to the respective towns and municipalities. So, I would really recommend that if anybody has questions, or if any of our constituents are asking questions, that we refer them to this on the DOR's website.
I know that.
Yeah, the phenomenon that this is trying to deal with, at least, that's caused a problem in Metro Boston, is complex operators are taking what would normally be affordable housing units out of circulation for full-time occupancy and ranging them out basically as Airbnbs or hotel rooms. And it does two things. It takes that out of the available stock of affordable housing for people who are looking for permanent housing, but also it's a quality-of-life thing, because if you're living in a complex and everybody else is a full-time resident, except there's a unit next to you that's run as a motel room, it's very disruptive. And so, it has a negative impact on the other residents, and it has a negative impact on available affordable housing. So, they've been trying to find a way to deal with that. And I know Air NIB in particular has used the term professional as kind of a loophole to get around this, because if you have a large complex and somebody owns a condo in it, they can claim, hey, I'm not a professional, I'm not covered by this, I can do it myself. The management can't do it, but I can do it. And I think that's the loophole that the term professional triggers with people. But, it does, it does get collected like its companion part that handles legitimate bed-and-breakfasts that are run by business, by operators that say, yeah, I'm here and I'm happy, you know, to be registered and pay my fee. I lease, I rent these rooms out all the time, and I'm very willing to pay the fee that you're asking me to pay. This is the extension of it. And it does happen in Northampton, because I've dealt, in my practice, with a number of condominium complexes where somebody is doing this with their individual unit, and the neighbors really don't like it, because they got some, they're living there all the time, and they get people coming and going, you know, for recreational weekends in Northampton that do not live in these units like an owner does, and it can be disruptive. So, it's a helpful thing. Counselor?
So, I was just gonna say that I have no objection to referring this and the next order to Community Resources for a hearing and further study. I have no objection to that.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, we talked about Metro Boston, but I agree, I wouldn't be surprised if it's a substantial issue here, because whenever it's a cute little town people like to come to, and often they just stay here and live here after that, which is good. But, you worry that it takes units off the market. And so, the other thing I appreciate about the way we did it is going above the thirty-five percent for affordable housing. So, that's excellent.
Counselor LeBarge?
Just quickly. I just want to give a little feedback on what Counselor Murphy was just talking about, which Craig also came out and said the word professional is not to be included. We want all the currently illegal Airbnb's to be included and become legal. And that's because the ones that are legal are paying for permits, and these people are getting away with it. So, that's where the big controversy is.
And those are something we'll have to try to work out with Craig. I think he may not be understanding what this particular piece of legislation is about. This isn't to rewrite the Airbnb regulations. This is actually referring to a specific section. And so, like, the city solicitor wrote this enactment language, because this is coming right out of the state law. So, we're just really reciting verbatim what's in the state law, and you're saying, do you accept it or not?
Yep. So, what I might suggest we do, and I'm very comfortable too, if we, when this gets to council, want to refer it to committee, because we have until July, it's not gonna take effect on then anyway. So, what I might suggest is we get this out of finance to the full council, and at that point, when it comes up, if we want to refer it to committee, that that would be probably the best way to deal with it. Counselor?
To me, if I'm gonna recommend, I'm gonna recommend myself, I don't know about any of the other counselors, with a neutral recommendation of the city council.
Time to make that.
I just have a question about what does it mean to use this tax for affordable housing for Northampton? What would be, what are the mechanics of that, and what, what, what does it mean?
The law says affordable housing projects. So, obviously, the city does a lot of work trying to leverage affordable housing projects in the city, whether using our CDBG monies or our CPA funds, whether it's applying for grant funds. So, my, that would be, you know, this is a new source of revenue, but anything we did use it on, we would have to come to the city council for an appropriation of the funds. So, we would probably continue to do the work that we've been doing, which is to try to support and leverage affordable housing projects in the city. I can't describe to you what that is yet. I don't know how much revenue we're talking about, but certainly, you know, there's, there are always opportunities for that.
It could use to fund something like a Habitat project or something that...
You could do that. You could use it as, you know, leveraging for one of our Valley CDC or Wayfinder projects, or leveraging CPA money along with other funds. So, there's lots of opportunities. Again, I don't know the size and scale of what we're talking about for this particular subset of short-term rentals.
So.
But, it would go into a revolving fund for affordable housing. So, it would go specifically into a fund if the council adopted this. Just to be clear, I just want to, I want to be clear about what the law says. The law says that at a minimum, you have to dedicate thirty-five percent to either affordable housing or infrastructure. And so, I've, my proposal is that a hundred percent of it go toward affordable housing. So.
All right. So, we had a motion on the floor before we opened this up.
I just said what mine was.
So, do you propose we change, as I think we said, to put on the floor a positive recommendation. Would you like to change that?
A neutral.
Like a neutral?
For me.
Or anyone else want to bite at the neutral recommendation?
Second?
Are you comfortable with that? All right, then, all in favor of a neutral recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. And this is the companion piece, which can certainly go the same way. This is eighteen two three five, "In order to accept Mass. General Law sixty-four G subsection three D to impose a community impact fee on short-term rentals within two- and three-family dwellings. Order that whereas by virtue of chapter three thirty-seven of the Acts of two thousand and eighteen, the legislature amended sixty-four G of the Massachusetts General Laws by adding subsection three D, which allows communities that have voted to impose a community impact fee upon the transfer of occupancy of a professionally managed short-term rental unit that is located within the city to impose a community impact fee upon each transfer of occupancy of short-term rental unit that is located within a two- or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. And whereas by virtue of the city council, immediately preceding this vote, the council voted to impose a community impact fee upon the total amount of rent of each transfer of occupancy of a professionally managed short-term rental unit. And whereas it's in the best interest of the city to impose community impact fees on the transfer of short-term rental units located within a two- or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence, and to dictate such fees to afford, or to dedicate, I'm sorry, such fees to affordable housing projects within the city. Whereas the authorization contained in subsection three D is a local option requiring the city council to vote to accept the provision thereof by majority vote. Now therefore, let it be ordered that the City of Northampton accepts the provisions of section three D of Mass. General Law, chapter sixty-four G, and hereby imposes a three percent community impact fee on the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a professionally managed unit that is located within the city. All community impact fees received pursuant to this order shall be paid to the city monthly by the operator. All community impact fees received pursuant to this order shall be dedicated to affordable housing projects within the city."
Move a neutral recommendation?
Second? Do we have a second?
Got you.
Second? Okay. Any more discussion on this one, or have we already pretty much talked it out?
It's just the same thing, except for a separate class of.
Just quickly, one thing, maybe the committee can take a look at it. It's just kind of bizarre to have this kind of self-referential phrase in it. One order says, "The city council just approved an order."
I'm not sure.
We will not have done that on first reading, so find a different way, or just not say it.
Or just strike that where it adds.
Just not, yeah, yeah.
Necessary.
So, just a note for the committee, maybe if you want to look at that, for fun.
So, any more discussion on this one? Then, all in favor of a neutral recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good. And then, when it gets to council, do you want to refer the both of these to committee? All right, the next one is eighteen two three six, "In order to reprogram Academy of Music Funds from the Foundation Repair to Stage Door Handicapped Access. Whereas the city appropriated funds to make stage door access at the Academy of Music handicapped accessible, and the project was bid in the spring of two thousand and eighteen, and whereas bids received exceeded the approved budget and the project was put on hold to review and rebid once additional funds were identified. And whereas the Academy of Music Foundation repairs have been completed and have funds remaining that are now surplus, order that the balance of six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars remaining in the Academy of Music Foundation Repair Capital Project account be reprogrammed and added to the hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars previously appropriated for the Academy of Music Stage Door Handicapped Access Project, bringing the total appropriated for this, for the Stage Door Handicapped Access Project to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars." Do we have a positive recommendation in finance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on this one? It's pretty self-explanatory.
Pretty self-explanatory. We did try to bid this other, the Handicapped Access Project last year. The bids came in higher than we anticipated. We're doing some reengineering and hoping to put it back out to bid in the spring. In the meantime, we finished the foundation project, which was a separate issue on the back where the new loading dock area was put in. And so, we want to just basically transfer this six thousand dollars worth of tailings from that project into the other Academy of Music project to have it available to fund that, to fund that project, which hopefully, with reengineering, will come in with the allotted funds we have available.
Any questions for the mayor on this? Hearing none, then all in favor of a?
Can you, can your vote be the equivalent of fixing a typo in the last line?
Yeah, I fixed it when I, I fixed it when I read it.
Oh, did you? Thank you.
Yeah, it, I fixed it when it, it said State Door Handicapped Project, and I read it as Stage Door.
I would never recover from the embarrassment of such an egregious.
Oh, because mine, mine says stage. I don't know where.
Yeah, mine says bring the total appropriated for the State Door Handicapped Project. Yeah. Mine says bring the total appropriated for the State Door Handicap Project. I read it as stage because...
Mine says stage.
But...
Mine says stage, so I don't know.
Mine's understood, so...
It isn't the State Door.
I don't know which order.
Stage Door.
What's that?
We have written Stage Door.
Yours says stage?
Yeah. The printed one says state. The one I'm reading in...
The one I have, well, the electronic version.
Electronic one could have been fixed.
Balances.
The one on the website says stage.
No, what appears on the screen is different than what printed out, and I don't quite understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine says state.
That one says stage up there.
That one says state. That said state.
Who's on first?
Mine says state, too.
Stage. Mine says stage. The printed version says stage.
He did play the academy.
That's right.
Trap door.
All right.
So...
Very good. Scrivener's error. Feel free to correct that.
Continuing along with voting on a positive recommendation, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Now, we're on to Sarah Lavalley's Community Preservation Act. This is 18-237, "In Order to Appropriate Community Preservation Act Funds for the Creation of Affordable Housing Units at Village Hill Apartments." Order that whereas the community builders submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funds for the creation of affordable housing units at Village Hill Apartments. And whereas the project will create approximately 65 units of mixed-income rental housing at Village Hill on two parcels, and 35 of these will be restricted to households and individuals earning 60% of the area median income or below. And whereas open space and playgrounds are part of the project and will be open and available for use by the public. And whereas Community Builders has an excellent record of providing affordable housing in Northampton and beyond. And whereas the project will leverage funds from a variety of other sources and has wide community support. And whereas on November 14, 2018, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $150,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now, therefore, it be ordered that $150,000 be appropriated from Community Preserv- Act, Preservation Act funding to the Community Builders for Village Hill Apartments project, and that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council, specifically that $89,000 is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve account, and $61,000 is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Do we have a motion in finance? Second?
Second.
All right. And Sarah's hanging out in the back, but can answer any questions? Do we have any questions? Counselor Bidwa?
Thank you. The reference to open spaces and playgrounds in here that would be part of this, there, there's been a lot of interest in, among Village Hill residents in having a, having more playgrounds up there. Can you, do you know a little more about what is planned there?
So, this project received a lot of community support from residents at Village Hill. The Community Builders has been a great neighbor so far, and they were, everyone we heard from was really excited about this project also. And part of that was the riverfront area that would be protected, and then some playgrounds that would be open to everyone in the city.
Do you have a sense where, where those playgrounds would be?
They're on the, so this is two parcels. One of them is towards the, the front of the former state hospital. The other one is, is towards the rear. So, this would be in, in the rear portion of development. But I, I don't know what the details of that would be.
Other questions for Counselor?
So, was this put out to bid?
I...
It's community, it's reference to going to Community Builders.
It, it hasn't been yet. That's part of the mass development project, but the actual construction hasn't gone out to bid yet.
Community Builders is a housing development company. They're not a construction company.
So, they...
Okay. So, this is the developer. Okay.
They would bid once they get funding.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Barge, did you have a, you don't have a question? All right. Counselor Scara?
In addition to the, the parks and open space, so for these 35 units that are, the affordable units, they have access to the same amenities that the, the other units have, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is all equal access for all those units?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, we're good. Next is 18-238, "In Order to Appropriate CPA Funds for the Parsons Brook Pine Barrens Acquisition Project." Order that whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for the purchase of 87 acres within the Parsons Brook Greenway on Route 66 and Burt's Spit Road. And whereas the area, the area includes rare pine barrens habitat, a cold-water fishery, core habitat of rare endangered species, acidic wetlands, and serves as a wildlife quarter for birds and large mammals, and is adjacent to an already protected open space. And whereas the project meets the goals of Sustainable Northampton Plan, Northampton Community Preservation Plan, and Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail to protect open space, provide for passive recreation, and protect heritage landscapes. And whereas on November 14, 2018, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $118,160 in Community Preservation Act funds used to support this project. Now, therefore, it be ordered that $118,160 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Parsons Brook Pine Barrens Acquisition Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council, specifically $118,160 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve. We have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second. Questions for Sarah on this one? Counselor Barge?
Yes. I attended the Community Preservation Commission meeting, and we had a lot of support from Ward Six on hopefully getting the money for this. And I was very pleased to see that we were sent approval from CPA money to come to city council to be approved. If you live up there, you'd understand why people love this area. And we're talking about our wildlife. This whole area is absolutely beautiful, and we can connect more onto the trails.
That's true. Yeah, this is...
We're looking at 87 acres. I think it's somewhere around there.
Yeah. City council already proved, approved this acquisition when Wayne came before you for, for the land grant approval to apply for, which happily we did receive. That was just announced last week.
Yep.
This is the far eastern portion of the former Willard gravel pit, and it abuts the Parsons Brook Conservation Area.
Other questions for Sarah on this one?
Yes. I have a quick question. First of all, it'd be useful, we have already approved this, but it would be useful to be able to see this on a map? And is it, is it connected to the ice pond area that we...
It, it's not. So, this is, there's, I did have a really quick PowerPoint, which is one slide for each of these.
This is the...
This abuts the, the land off of Cardinal Way. So, it's just to the west of Cardinal Way.
Yeah. It's the eastern part of the gravel bank property.
Exactly. Correct.
Off of Ryan Road.
So, it's, it's west of Cardinal Way and east, you know, east of the gravel bank.
Yes.
I guess I was asking, just because I was trying to get a sense if there's any contiguity, contiguities, is that the word, between the, the parcels that we have acquired in the recent past?
So, there, it doesn't directly connect to anything that was recently acquired, but it does directly abut all of the open space that was provided to the city when Cardinal Way was...
It will eventually.
Because it's totally contained between Burt's Pit and 66 west of Cardinal Way. So, it's kind of...
That's right.
Does it do anything to protect the turtles that we've heard about are in danger there?
It does, definitely. So, this area is natural heritage and endangered species habitat. The species are protected, but I would imagine that it's most likely turtles. Turtles really like the sandy habitat that's really common there.
Plus, we also have, have residents who are watching the turtles very, very carefully because of so many cars going through and killing them.
That's true. And there's a heron rookery there as well.
Any more questions on this one for Sarah? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The next is 18-239, "In Order to Appropriate CPA Funds for the Rocky Hill Trail at Burt's Bog." Order that whereas the Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability has submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funds for a .75-mile multi-use trail within the Burt's Bog Greenway. Whereas the project meets the goals of the Northampton Sustainability Plan, the Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Plan. And whereas the project has wide community and regional support, will connect neighborhoods and create safe routes to school and meaningful non-motorized vehicle options. And whereas CPA funds will be used to match for an approved FY19 federal land and water conservation fund grant. And whereas on November 14, 2018, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $200,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now, therefore, it be ordered that $200,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Rocky Hill Trail at Burt's Bog, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the city council, specifically $45,840 is allocated from the CPA Open Space Reserve account, and that $154,160 is allocated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve account. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And questions on this one for Sarah? Counselor?
Yes. I attended that meeting also. We had full house. And what I had mentioned at the CPA commission meeting was that we're looking at, with this money that we needed to do what we wanted to do there, was to build a three-quarter of a mile, a handicapped accessible trail through Burt's Bog Greenway, serving people of all abilities. We also will be able to replace, correct, an in former desire line trail that was created by users ignoring sensitive resource with a trail that respects and protects the ecosystem because we did have problems that people were abusing around that area. I feel also, which I told the CPA commission, that we are looking at something very, very valuable here, that we are going to be knitting together three neighborhoods, Sandy Hill, Brookwood Drive, Overlook, Ryan Road School, and Burt's Spit Road. I'm going to use as an example, one child going from Sandy Hill Road to the Ryan Road School and Burt's Spit Road. It's totally impossible. They could not walk the 2.1 miles to the school because our roads do not have sidewalks, and they are extremely dangerous. So, with this trail that would suddenly be about nine-tenths of a mile, some of our families might choose to walk because they're going to be out of the danger. So, then, we can start in Ward Six, the walking school bus, which is extremely valuable in Ward Six. And I've talked with some of the families already, and they're very interested in that. So, I think in the long term, this trail will connect to the city's 11-mile multi-use trails, providing more transportation and recreation opportunities. And that's why we had a good crowd from Ward Six and throughout, and supporting the leverage of the $2,000, $200,000 federal grant that the city just received for this project. So, I, we can't go wrong with this. So, you can speak about it. You were there that night.
Yeah. So, Counselor Leparch summed it up really well, but this will, this will connect neighborhoods that currently don't have any safe route to Ryan Road School. There's no sidewalks in most of those neighborhoods. There's no good way to get there without traveling several miles around. So, this will alleviate that issue. And as Counselor Barge noted, the, the current paths that were there, that were created when the parcel was still privately owned, are just sort of the, well, this is the smallest distance between two points, but we know that there is a lot of turtle and other habitat there, and those didn't really respect the, those resource areas. So, what's planned? Definitely we'll do that.
We're going to be giving out snowshoes?
There certainly will.
Any other questions for Sarah? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Excellent. And the next is 18-240, "In Order to Appropriate CPA Funds for Preservation of a 125-year-old window at Forbes Library." Order that the Northampton Central Services Department submitted a CPA application for restoration of a 125-year-old window at Forbes Library. And whereas the library is an important, is important to the history of the city and the region, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and includes valuable historic collections, including the Calvin Coolidge Presidential Library. And whereas restoration of the windows is an appropriate historic treatment that conforms to the Secretary of the Interior's standards and will be used to secure the building's envelope and increase energy efficiency. And whereas on November 14, 2018, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $100,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now, therefore, it be ordered that $100,000 be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Central Services Forbes Library Window Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council, specifically, the $100,000 is appropriated from the CPA Historic Reserve. Do we have a motion in? Second?
Second.
Any questions for Sarah on this one? This has been kicking around capital improvements for a very long time, looking for funding. So, Counselor Nash?
Yeah. So, it, within the order, it refers to a window and then window.
Window. It's, it's windows.
And so, I'm wondering, is it one window?
It is not one window. It is, it is all the windows.
It's a nice window. And, okay.
Yeah. They're, they're...
I see what you're meaning.
They're actually original, and this has been in capital improvements. I'm familiar with the project. It's big custom windows that were put in the building when it was originally done. And, and because they're old and kind of leaky windows, it's hard for them to climate control their collections because the windows need to be fixed. But they are historic windows because they're original to the building, and they're big giant things. And, you know, they, they're, yeah, there's a lot of them, and they're architecturally significant to the integrity of the building. And it's just, they've had to been, they've needed to be done for a while, and it's been where, where do we fund them? And this is a good thing for that building.
And this came before the Community Preservation Committee a few years ago, and at that point, it was sort of a more piecemeal approach to replace some of the most damaged windows. And the committee just really didn't think that that was an appropriate treatment for such an important historic building. But they were really in favor of this application, which will be a complete restoration of the original windows, which held up pretty well.
How did you apply for, Sarah?
They applied for $400,000.
So, this is a much more manageable amount, and, and work has been done with capital, within the capital program for other components of what the building's needed. So, the building is a lot further along at this point than it was when this came around before. And this is, you know, they're getting near the, the end, and the windows is a part of that. So, it is much more contained and affordable project now.
And the, because the original application this time was for $400,000, the, the committee looked at that and had some funding constraints that didn't end up materializing because of some other grants that weren't received. So, those, those recommendations aren't before you, but the committee did make it clear to Central Services that they could come back and time for, with an additional application if necessary.
Yeah. Get it done for $100,000. Any other, any other question? Counselor Nash?
Well, the mayor's shaking his head. So, there's more money involved in this project? This is, so we're actually breaking up, I think you were saying $400,000 or...
Yeah, no, we, we were trying to, so the project, we're going to be probably coming back to you for additional capital improvement funds. We were hoping to leverage some of our city capital funds for the, which is why we applied for 400. So, so I just didn't want you to think that the price had gone down. It's actually, this has been, we finished the HVAC project, which is setting up the zoned climate control collection room. But we've now bid the windows like two or three different times, and it's, it's expensive. So, we decided rather than come back with the capital process, we would attempt to obtain monies through the CPA to leverage the money that we already had. So, we'll go back and reassess, and we may have to break up the window project into smaller chunks, or we may have to try to add additional monies in this, in the CIP. So, anyway, just wanted to know.
Yeah. Counselor Scara?
So, is the total cost $400,000 or no?
No. No. And I don't, can't give you an accurate estimate of what it would be because we haven't been, it has come in higher than expected. So, we were, I believe, I believe we have about, we have about four, four to six, 400, I think that we have already appropriated for the project, but it's not going to be enough. So, we were hoping to leverage CPA dollars. So, but then... So, but this is, obviously, we appreciate, we understand CPA dollars are, have been restricted this year, so we're appreciative about it, and we'll go back to work on it. I just didn't want to leave the impression that suddenly the price had gone down-
Right.
-from the four hundred we needed. It's just the CPA often has to triage and, and cuts down people's grant applications.
Okay.
But it's part of an ongoing effort to finish off that building and get the envelope so the collections are protected and everything. So all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance for this one, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great, and that brings us to the, the end of our agenda, and I don't have any other new business, so a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel that Counselor Murphy pretty much runs the entire meeting this day. All of finances, most of our agenda.
Counsel President?
Oh, please.
Is it, is it okay to send Sarah packing? Do we need her?
We can thank Sarah for showing up and, and release her.
And we don't want to make it sound like we're riding around on a rail.
Well, I, I think she'd pay us good money.
She'd probably be glad to go home, though.
Thank you, Sarah, for your presentation. So, good. So let's run through some of these things which you have just heard about. The first financial, there's eighteen, two, three, "In order to acquire land on Chestnut Mountain Road and Hatfield for water supply protection." Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Who seconded that?
Second.
Okay, everyone.
Anyone? Now, you want to take care of that easement issue you brought up?
Amendment.
Counselor Bidwell?
I think you could cure it.
We could either do it now on second reading, or if we want to make a quick amendment now, what, weren't we substituting the word property for what was?
I was thinking, you could, you could just remove the words "of" the easement so that the final part read, further that no appropriation is necessary for the acquisition.
Period.
Authorized, yeah.
I would offer that-
I would second that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing abstentions to the amended ocean. Okay, it's already on the floor, so any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Mann?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
I'm going to read the next two sort of together. Eighteen, two, three, four, "In order to accept master general law," chapter sixty-four G, section three D A, "to impose community impact fee on short-term rentals," and eighteen, two, three, five, "in order to accept master general law," chapter sixty-four G, section three D B, "to impose a community impact fee on short-term rentals within two and three-family dwellings." Is there a motion first to-
I'd like to refer to-
We're going to refer, well, we're going to put on the floor first, so I want a motion to approve these as a group.
Motion to approve as a group.
Okay, and second.
Second.
Now, we, I want, you're going to have a referral?
Referral, please refer to community resources, both items.
Okay. So made and seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Okay.
Can I just clarify real quick? So just to clarify, we're going to have a public forum on this, right? This doesn't need to be a public hearing, right? I heard public hearing mentioned many times, but-
I think we're using the term loosely.
Yes. We can do whatever you want. It's just going to your committee.
I will commit to doing a public forum.
You can have, you can show a movie if you want. Yeah. Okay. Any discussion on the referral? Okay. All those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed any abstentions, so. Both of those are referred. Next is eighteen, two, three, six, "In order to reprogram Academy of Music Funds from Foundation Repair to Stage Door Handicap Access." Motion to approve.
Approval?
Seconded by Counselor Klein. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, ask for a roll.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
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 Yes.